Good afternoon and welcome to our first meeting of July, and I don't think it's raining. I think it's rained every meeting this year. But it's not raining this afternoon, and we appreciate those of you who are with us today in our council chambers and those of you watching us on our Electric City Television. Imocation and note be given by Councilman Steve Kirvin, our respects to the flag to be given by Councilman Don Chapp. Please rise.
Let us pray. Dear God, we are thankful that we live in a land of freedom where meetings of this type can be held. We ask for your guidance and for your blessing on this body. Please help us remember at all times that when we sit in these seats, we speak as a government and not as individuals. And in doing so, help us always to honor and respect the rights and liberties of every individual subject to the jurisdiction of this government. Help us make reasoned and fair decisions in all that we do. Amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start our meeting, we have a special recognition. It's always gratifying to work with our employees here on our team, and it's always kind of sad when they leave, so I'm gonna ask Chief Horn and Lieutenant Poplin to come up.
Chief, I'll let you lead.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and manager. To give you a little history of Tommy and what he's accomplished during his career, he came to work at the City Fire Department May 15, 1977. He was promoted through the ranks of Sergeant, 2002, Lieutenant in 2007. Tommy was an active member of the City Bomb Squad for over 15 years. Put a lot of time into that, and he was one of the... he sort of helped form the Explorer Program at the Fire Department. So four years ago, he had to make a decision. The police officer retirement was changing the rules, so he decided to go ahead and retire out, come back under the rehire program, and now after 36 years, he's reached his final retirement. And as firefighters look at each other, they remember that big one that they were on together. And for Tommy and me, and he's the last one that I'll remember this, our big one was 35 years ago. It was a Blakeville fire, and that's one we'll remember for a long time. Tommy, as a friend, it's a job well done.
Tommy, we have a plaque here. It's from our council, and it says, "An appreciation for 36 years of loyal and dedicated service to the City of Anderson." And I'd like to present to you this plaque on this date, and appreciate it. And I think we got...
A few more gifts?
Couple more. Hold on to this one.
That's the check.
You want to say anything about these? Tommy had a special presentation for his two sons. One of them was here tonight, and the city allows funds for a watch. He bought two watches and has one for each one of his sons, and it was sort of to remember the Christmases he was...
Do you want your son to remember?
Come on now.
Come on up. Thirty-six years is a long time, but we appreciate you. I've been there.
Appreciate all you did with this.
This is also a time of the year where we have an election of our new mayor pro temp for upcoming year.
Mayor, may I make a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept Mr. Tony Stewart as our mayor pro temp.
First by Mr. Roberts. Second by Mr. Chapp.
Discussion? All those in favor, sighs. Opposed? New mayor pro temp. Congratulations. Thank you. The minutes of our June 24 meeting were distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
I move they be adopted. First by Mr. Waffler. Second by...
Me. Mr. Chapp. Public safety, sighs. Opposed. Minutes of June 24th passed from Anderson. We have one item of old business, and that item is request consideration of second and third reading of ordinance 1308 to amends section 18-49 of the Anderson City Code Regarding Animal Care. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I would like to ask Chief Stewart and our animal control officer, Michelle Smith, if she would come down in case I need some assistance, which I might. And Michelle certainly has a lot of expertise. I'd also like to, in going back, you gave first reading on this ordinance two weeks ago, referred it to the Public Safety Committee, which was of great value. I see a lot of faces in tonight's audience. In fact, most of the folks tonight were there last Monday for the Public Safety Committee. Had some great ideas, and the thing that I will have to say, that all of the people there at the Public Safety Committee were in favor of doing something to assist the dogs that are under duress in our community. As Michelle has said, there's probably 300 to 400 that are improperly tethered and in very poor conditions. We quickly came to understand that you could take months or even years debating all the details of an ordinance like this. And I think what I'll share with you, then the committee can speak. So what we did is, there were a couple things. Some people did attend to talk about the number of dogs, and certainly they are dog owners that care for dogs when they're beyond four, and the committee recognized that. We dropped that out for the moment, but the committee did indicate they'd like to go back and revisit that, maybe with some inspection process by animal control. So those that do not properly care by numbers, then that could be eliminated. But again, the mission of the committee, and I think the people who were there, was those 300 or 400 dogs need assistance now. Just don't make them wait. And then the other part was, which was also a good suggestion by some folks in the audience that are...who were there that day, that as far as the tethering, you have the two-hour limit, then you must be with the dog. There are a lot of opportunities for people to have their dogs in their front or rear yards and be able to see it from their windows, so we removed the piece of must be outside with the animal the entire time. So those are really the two major changes. Again, I think the people who were there and the committee, and they could speak, realize that this is probably not the end of the ordinance. It's a starting point, and is a good starting point that will give Michelle and the people who assist her...we have a lot of volunteers. I think that was the most rewarding part about the meeting, offering to do brochures, tons of people and resources to help the people who would like to do better for their dogs. And I can't remember all the names, but as far as fencing and spay neuter, there were just lots of things and opportunities. And I think if nothing else, that when you pass this and we move forward, Michelle will certainly have a large support group of volunteers that are in our community to help her. So those were the changes. So you do have the basic tethering law that if I could summarize it, two hours, no more than two hours, you must be present, and then there are other things as far as sanitary and healthy conditions. Do y'all want to add anything?
Good, I appreciate that. Hopefully turn this around pretty quick, and I appreciate the committee's willingness to get together, and also the citizens that came to the committee meeting. Any comments from the committee members?
Well, I'd just like to say, first of all, I'd just like to thank all the citizens who came out to really show their support of what we're trying to do, and because it's going...in order for this to work, it's going to take the help of everybody, not just this council, not the police department, but of the citizens as a whole, the organizations who want to see these pets protected as well. But I think one of the great things that came out of the committee was that we wanted to make sure that when Michelle goes out to enforce this, is we're just not giving them a ticket saying that you've got so many days to correct this, but at the same time, she's giving them an educational brochure that says, hey, here's what your violation is, here's the numbers of organizations that can help you correct these violations, so it gives them an out to where it can solve their problem, whatever issues they're having. So I think that was very important, and I think it was the entire group's thought process is that even though this is a working ordinance, because things are going to change, it's going to be ever-evolving, until we get it all tied down is that the ultimate goal would be hopefully to eliminate tethering altogether. So with that, just wanted to share that for the other council members.
Anything else, Mr. Chapp?
I have one. And I know initially, you know, I've...in the discussions with the variety of people that showed up that seemed to be all in favor of doing something more so about the 24-hour tethering, seven days a week for, I think, some 10 years. You know, I've had some phone calls that I believe...I think the two-hour limit is a...is an opportune...opportunity for some people who properly tether their animals. There are, I know a number of people who have maybe some older people that have smaller dogs, not necessarily the larger dogs, but at times they may tether their dog just temporarily, just to let him get outside because they're a household dog. So I don't...I think the main thing we need to do when we start exploring that is we need to look at the proper tethering most methods to make sure, and it's temporary. It's not a permanent solution to containing the dog. But with that, I think I was also, like Councilman Stewart, I was very appreciative of all the people who showed up, who had some great insight and, you know, have the love of animals, just like most of us do. And I think it's not the people that were those people that they were most concerned with, it's the people who really look at the animal as more of a fixture to their house or they're looking at it solely as a security measure and nothing else, not as a pet and not as a humane way of containing their dog. So with that, that's pretty much all.
Mr. Horvath?
Mayor, I'd like to also...what Mayor Pro Temp Stewart, that sounds good for the first time, Mayor Pro Temp Stewart, said thanking the folks and our staff for working on a plan, and Mayor, you know, what came out of the committee was, you know, it's a work in progress. There's probably going to be no rules that are going to be perfect the first time, and it may not suit everybody the first time, but it's certainly moving in the right direction. And whether we have to adjust the tethering to eliminate it totally or to allow it somewhat, you know, at least we need to give, you know, give our staff an opportunity to help the animals that need help. So with that, you know, I'd like to make a motion, we approve this on third reading. Second reading.
We have a first...
Second.
And a second, and we'll get into discussion, but before we get into any further discussion and go on this second reading, I know that we had public comment at the last meeting. We had good comments in the committee meeting, and I think we recorded those comments. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak against the ordinance? Sir, would you come up and tell us who you are and where you live? Name and address. My name is William Chad Funk. I was born in Anderson County. I'm a native of Anderson County. I'm a deacon in my local church. I'm a combat veteran of both Iraq and Afghanistan.
You live in Anderson County?
City of Anderson, Anderson County.
Anderson County. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
And I'm a activist for the constitutional rights of farmers, hunters, and animal owners. I'm also the website editor for the South Carolina AgCom Co-op. I'm not a spokesperson for the group, but I'm speaking on my own behalf. As an activist for the constitutional rights of animal owners, I believe in equality of the people of Anderson County. This also includes the minority and lower-income citizens of our city. I am here because I'm ashamed of the actions of the county council and the city council, because these new tethering laws are directed at the city and counties' minority and lower-income Now, I know that the leadership from Freedom Fences has been conducting lobbying efforts to...for their, I consider, elitist organization. Now, this organization is unfounded in their opposition of tethering, but tethering is not only a political correct way to target minority and lower-income animal owners in Anderson County. In reality, African-Americans who own pit bulldogs are not fighters, not always dog fighters like Michael Vick. They are not all drug dealers. As I have heard some of the county councilmen construe, the same is also true for the lower-income whites who tether their dogs. Tethering a pit bulldog in your yard does not make you a meth dealer. A lot of these folks are hard-working people who love their dogs, and they are in danger of losing their constitutional rights and being harassed as animal owners because of these ordinances. Let me see, I lost my place. Also, the problem that these Freedom Fence organizations claim are a result of tethering are already covered in animal welfare laws. If you had a reliable animal welfare enforcement in a city, these ordinances would not be necessary. As a soldier who served in two combat zones, I witnessed men die for our constitutional rights that we have today. So I'm asking the city council to drop these ordinances and stand with me as I attempt to preserve the constitutional rights of animal owners for our children and our generations to come. Now, a lot of the stuff y'all say about tethering, the tethering the dog digging into his neck or not having food and shelter, the same thing can happen in a kennel. Tethering a dog does not constitute animal cruelty, especially somebody who has owned dogs. I've owned dogs all my life. I'm not a breeder or anything like that. I have a farm. I use my dogs...I think a tethering is easier than a kennel because I can actually move my dog around on a tether a lot easier than I can move a kennel. A kennel fills up with dog feces, and it's harder to move this kennel, and it's more work. But with a tether, I can just move my dog to a fresher spot in the yard. He's better took care of, and if I feed and water...if I don't feed and water my dog, it isn't because he's on a tether. A tether does not constitute animal cruelty. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Is anybody else that would like to speak against the ordinance?
Hey, if you want to line up, we'd mind.
Come on up. Yes, sir.
Just so you guys know, my name's Brian Jones. I'm the president of Clemson Kennel Club. Now, as the Clemson Kennel Club, we're actually a tri-county club. We donate money to Pickens, Oconee, and Anderson. You know, I grew up in a house of Alaskan Malamutes. I don't know if you guys know what those are, but they're pretty big sled dogs. And you ever see them out in Alaska? They never put them in kennels. They tether, always. Just something to keep in mind. There's a lot of people in our city, in our county, that can't take their dogs for walks. Maybe they're older, maybe they've hurt their foot or something, it's hard to take them for a walk. I think tethering, and correct me if I'm wrong, is a safe way of exercising your animals if you can't take them for a walk or you live in an area where they don't allow fencing. You know, again, I grew up with Malamutes and they're diggers, so if you put a fence up, what do they do? They dig out or they jump over. I just want you guys to reconsider the time limit. I like the restraints that you have in this proposal. I think Ms. Michelle has done a great job helping you guys put that together, and I know she works really hard at this, but I think the time limit is going to be a problem. People that go to work with their dogs out, they don't leave them in the house all day or leave them in a crate all day, so they get zero exercise. Maybe they go to work, spend eight hours at work, come home, bring their dog back in the house. That's something that us as members of the Clemson Kennel Club, and again, we do a lot of good for all three of these counties. I think when our dog show comes to town, we actually...was it Glenn Brill gave us some numbers? We created about $318,000 worth of revenue for the city and the county, and we've donated a little over $12,000 to those three organizations. And we do a lot of community service work, teaching people the proper way to take care of their dogs, to handle their dogs, nutrition, health. Just so you guys know, we'd be happy to be a resource to help you educate people in the city of Anderson, and I appreciate you guys listening to me.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. So we had a first and a second. Any further council discussion?
There may be somebody that wants to speak before.
Just thought they would pop up. We've established an order here. Anybody else? I didn't think so. Discussion?
I would address Mr. Funk, as I am Dr. Patrice Sherri. I do live in the county. I am the co-founder, along with Pauline Cross, in the Freedom Fences. Not that it's important to you all, but this gentleman here has accused us of being lobbyists for the Humane Society.
Do me a favor.
Yes, sir.
In this meeting, would you just talk to us?
Yes.
Okay.
We have been accused of being a lobbyist. We all work full-time jobs. Here are some of our volunteers. We do this because we care, not because we're lobbyists. We're not targeting anybody. We're helping African-American, Caucasian, Hispanic. We don't ask the color of people. We help those who can't help themselves so they can keep their dogs. We don't want dogs going to the shelter. Rhonda Sims pulls hundreds and hundreds of dogs every year out of the shelter. She's fixing dogs. We're spaying and neutering dogs. Sorry, I'm not supposed to look over there. We are trying to help the city, the county, Michelle. Our citizens have a better way for their animals, and I resent the fact that we're being called lobbyists. On a Facebook page, we were a different Facebook page because we had to ban a certain person for some comments that were not very nice. We were called activists? Yes, I am an activist, sir, Mayor. I am an activist. Until the last breath I take, I will unchain dogs in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm as council, anybody discussing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I was out of town last week and missed the committee meeting, but I've been studying this ordinance, and I think the purpose of what we're doing is to help dogs and make sure that dogs are humanely treated in the city. This ordinance is not outlawing tethering, but it's taking...we want to get rid of the person who's chaining the dog to a center block in the sun with no food, no water. That's what this ordinance is focused at. I don't think it's taking away tethering. I think I would probably agree that, you know, the committee came back with deleting two provisions, the number of dogs and that the party must be outside with the dog. I don't know if that was part of the motion, but obviously I want that as part of the motion. And I think I also agree about the time limit, that maybe the two hours is not really sufficient for some people who have other reasons not to be outside with their dog. I don't think...if you're properly, humanely tethering the animal so that the animal...it's not hurting the animal, it has food, water, shade, shelter, I don't think the two-hour limit is really something that needs to be focused on. What we should be focusing on is protecting the dog so that it's not some heavy chain injuring the animal. Obviously, everyone would like to be able to have a fence, but some people can't afford a fence. Some people have animals that won't stay in a fence, but they still take really good care of their dog. And so I don't want this ordinance to punish those people who are good dog owners, and so I would also make a motion that we either change or take out the two-hour limit on the tethering ordinance.
Comments?
Just a couple comments. One, just wanted to say, you know, I think as being a committee member, we didn't...I think during that committee, we didn't go to that meeting targeting people who don't take care of dogs. We went to the meeting to target the animals who can't speak for themselves or take care of themselves. So that's what we were trying to target, and again, we never said during that meeting that this ordinance, like Mr. Anderson said, we're doing away with the tethering for now. But again, what we're trying to do, and I was telling some of my fellow council members just coming to the council meeting today, I wrote a particular street. There was a dog, probably weighed 80 pounds, but had probably a four-inch chain around its neck. And so those are the things that we're trying to educate the people. Well, if you're going to tether, here are the proper ways to tether, and here are people who can help you as an educational standpoint. Second thing is, is that Councilman Anderson, if during the committee meeting, we talked about tethering the animal for not more than two continuous hours, but if you do it for more than two hours, then it goes into a different thing where they said that we said the animal's got to be in view of that person during...if it's four hours, six hours, what do you do if that person goes to work and they're not in view but they're properly tethering? So those...it kind of...when we change that, it bumps into something else, I think. So I'll just open that up to any other suggestions that we may have.
Mr. Kirwin?
Well, I just want to say a couple things. You know, I learned a long time ago that the quickest way to get somebody really mad at you is to get in between them, either their children or their animals. And regardless of the purpose of this or the goal, to some extent, that's the way it's perceived. And that's not the intent of, I don't think, anybody up here. I think it's been said well by a lot of people that, you know, I think there are some practical issues with this, the way this thing is written, that it's going to have to be dealt with. And, you know, I feel hopefully it'll be done in a way, and we talked last time about having some type of transition methodology, and I hope that this will be done that way. having some type of transition methodology and I hope that this will be done that way so that if we do have someone that has a problem with the two-hour time limit because of work or whatever, that we work with those folks and come up with a way that we can protect the animal, but also, you know, meet their requirements. So basically, I think, again, you know, this isn't, this is not going to be carved in stone, it's going to be an evolving process to some degree. And, but we do need to make a start somewhere and because the main thing is there are animals out there that are, that are being mistreated and we need to be able to do something to help those worst situations.
I think the, the motion, the first and the second, we're in discussion right now in the second reading. I think the intention, Ms. Anderson, was just these two items?
I just want to clarify that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I just want to add one thing to what Councilman Stewart had mentioned. It's one thing that we, that I asked during the committee meeting was about Freedom Fences and would they be able to handle the influx of the amount of people who would be required or need their assistance? And that was one of the things that Councilman Stewart had brought to, is to produce some type of information pamphlet that allows that person the means. So in essence, what it's doing is it's helping the person that you're saying that maybe be targeting, is that it's giving them an opportunity to have a free opportunity to better contain their animal in a more humane way. And I just wanted to clarify that, so.
Mr. Mayor, I would conclude with this. There are a lot of people with a lot of information that have offered to help. I wouldn't be surprised if we get a support group going forward and this would be support for the dogs or the animals. But we did promise the committee and the councils, we always do, change needs to be evaluated. And this is a good start. I certainly recommend it and I know Michelle and Chief Stewart, we're going to keep records of who we see and who gets the educational help versus those we end up that we can't educate. And we'll bring that back on a periodic basis. So with those comments, that was discussed in the committee. We realize this is not going to be a perfect situation, but it's a good move in the right direction and subject to change with input from the community. So we'd recommend you move forward with it.
Mr. Mayor, I've listened to all of this and it's good information. I think in reference to what Councilman Anderson mentioned, it's going to be very difficult to decide who should be, you know, allowed to tether his dog longer or who should be a person who is not allowed. But I think the whole thing is, city manager just said, it's a good start. And I think that as we go along, as it evolves, we're going to find ways that we need to change, but I would say, let it go as it is right now and let's move forward with careful monitoring by the police, by Michelle. And if problems come up, let's come back and go back to the table and see what we need to change. But has, the motion has been seconded, hasn't it? Or has it?
It has.
Okay.
Good. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously on the second reading. Make the motion, we approve it on third and final reading. First by Mr. Stewart. It's seconded by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously on the third and final reading. Appreciate the comments, the hard work, our team, the citizens, and as everyone said, this is a work in progress and we'll continue to move forward. Our next, thank you guys. Our next item is, we're getting into two items of new business that are in referrals to the planning commission. I think we'll take one vote and let the city manager, I'll read them.
Yeah, this, this just begins the public process, Mr. Mayor, so if you can read what they are and the location, maybe the applicants, then we'll refer them.
This first one is request consideration of referral to the planning commission, a petition to rezone 206 West Hampton Street for R M 10 multifamily residential to N P Neighborhood Professional. And the second one is request consideration of referral to the planning commission to annex and zone 629 through 647, 651, 652, 653, 654, 655, and 691, South Carolina 28 Bypass to General Commercial. Tax maps, two tax maps, too. First by Mr. Roberts. Second by Mr. Lachey. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Passed unanimously to go to the planning committee. Before we get into administrative briefing, I would like to take a brief moment to say thank you to Buck Roberts for being the Mayor Pro Tem last year.
Thank you for making it easy on him.
Yes.
Showing up at every meeting, huh? Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, appreciate it. Administrative brief. Mr. Moore?
Just a couple of things. Again, you have attached your, or in your package, your monthly progress report, kind of let you know where we are on your major initiatives and any other major projects. I'll let you go through that. I mean, we've talked, usually talk about twice a year in our mid-year review and our retreats. Then the other thing would be for the remainder of July, again, we, we have next week is the Municipal Association's Annual Meeting in Greenville. Great opportunity to be with other municipal elected officials, to learn, learn and share new things that are going on. And so with those, that's all we have, Mr. Mayor. And I would ask, as on the agenda, we need just a few minutes in executive session for the city attorney to update you on the litigation regarding Star Ival Water and Sewer District versus the city of Anderson.
Thank you. I entertain the motion going to executive session. First by Mr. Roberts. Second by Mr. Stewart. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? We stand in executive session.